Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the January 22nd meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Lundey has our word for the day.
Our inspirational word comes from Romans, "Do everything possible on your part to live in peace with everybody."
Good. We have no dog this morning, sorry to disappoint. Hopefully, we'll have one next week. So, we're going to move right on to Resolutions.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Preparations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordes should be here later on, so we will need an executive session, it's my understanding. I don't have all the, I know we have Personnel Summary, or Personnel Summary Sheet, and Jerry, do you have a need?
I do. Do you know what kind of personnel items he?
I don't.
Don't we have one relating to 911?
Hiring?
Hiring, yeah.
Okay, well then, we just have to identify that, so.
Okay.
Approve and waive the reading in the minutes of October 22nd, 2019, November 19th and 20th, 2019, December 3rd, 10th, 11th, and 18th, 2019, and January 13th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize the issuance of not exceed 2.5 million job and family services capital impairment bond anticipation notes, Series 2020, for the purpose of paying cost of constructing and acquiring improvements to Lorraine County Job and Family Services Building, including HVAC improvements, roof repair and replacement, sidewalk, parking lot, sewer, landscape, security, and all other site and building improvements, together with all necessary appetances thereto, and providing additional project funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This money actually won't be paid from general fund dollars, just for the benefit of the people here. The state picks up the cost of those improvements.
And they're much-needed improvements.
Yes, and it looks wonderful over there, too, by the way.
That building, just on the jobs and family services side, services about 47,000 residents of our county each year.
Yeah, jobs Ohio's over there, or...
Ohio means jobs.
Ohio means jobs is over there also.
I don't have their numbers, but I know they service a lot of people as well.
They do.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize the issuance of not exceed 3.5 million capital improvement plan improvements bond anticipation notes, Series 2020, for the purpose of paying cost of constructing and acquiring improvements to various county-owned properties, including HVAC improvements, roof repair and replacement, sidewalk, parking lot, storm sewer, landscape, security, and all other site and building improvements, and additional money for new warehouse and repairs to parking decks and service lots, together with all necessary appetances thereto and providing additional project funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to mention that those numbers always seem so huge, but one of the things that I know the counties learned, and most even homeowners learned, is that those numbers don't go away if you ignore those repairs and you don't pay attention to the necessary maintenance and upkeep, because then it compounds and creates a greater strain financially. So unfortunately, it's a necessary evil.
It's the cost of doing business, and a lot of this, we had to postpone because we didn't have money to accommodate some of these capital improvements, so.
Correct.
And these are not our buildings, they're the taxpayers' buildings. We're just charged with responsibility, making sure they stay operational and stay in good shape.
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize the issuance of not exceed 1.555,000 million CLE building improvement bond anticipation notes, Series 2020, for the purpose of paying cost of constructing and acquiring CLE building improvements, including roof repair and replacement, sidewalk and parking lot repair and replacement, landscape and security, and all other site and building improvements, together with all necessary appetances thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize the issuance of not exceed 4.2 million court information technology case management system improvement bond anticipation notes, Series 2020, for the purpose of paying cost of acquiring, installing, and implementing improvements for Lorraine County Court Information Technology System, including hardware and software upgrades, service, computers, rack switches, migration and integration development, tracking system, license fees, and all other capital costs required for system installation and use, together with all necessary appetances thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I guess the previous system was in place, what, 15, 18 years?
Right.
So, you know, eventually, you got to transition, the technology evolved so quickly that sometimes you fear anything you put in place is outdated in a couple of years. But this was something where everyone worked together to bring in a better system, and at the same time, this county did not waste a quarter of a million dollars, as one of our counties did, not too far to the west, when they went out and actually hired a consultant at 250,000 to basically arrive at the same conclusion that we arrived at, and by working collectively, saved the taxpayers that money.
That's right, and a lot of this software will talk to each other, which was not the capability of the old system, so.
Well, and I think that anytime you do a software upgrade like this, first of all, it's going to create a synergy that allows, it seems to be less labor-intensive than the previous system. It allows your workers, those who use the system, to work more efficiently. I've been through several software transitions, and I feel that we're going to see some great outcomes there, but then I think we have to also take a step back and think about the attempted ransomware that was targeted at our county, and it is now more important than ever to make sure that our systems are fully secure and safeguarded, and this couldn't be happening at a more pertinent time.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize issuance of not exceed 1,770,000 County Board of Elections Voting Equipment Bond Anticipation Notes, Series 2020, for a purpose of paying cost of acquiring voting equipment for Lorraine County Board of Elections, together with all necessary appetances thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I just wanted to say that this is something I think we've read in the papers recently about Secretary of State feeling strongly about the state picking up more of the tabs of the cost of these elections. You know, we have to absorb some of these costs, the state certainly helped out. I know now with Commissioner Kowski being in a leadership role with the County Commissioner Association, they are constantly advocating to make sure that the state steps up to pick up a huge chunk of this. I know when I was a legislator, unsuccessfully kept lobbying for the state to pick up the tab on this, because it can be quite expensive for counties to do, and I'm pleased to see the Secretary of State, I think, is also lobbying to make sure that everybody gets an absentee ballot mailed to them at the cost paid for by the state.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize the issuance of not exceed 2 million County Health Department building bond anticipation notes, Series 2020, for the purpose of paying cost of constructing and acquiring improvements for a new facility for Lorraine County General Health District, together with all necessary appetances thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just another clarification for the public, this is also money that will not be taken from the general fund to pay back this debt. The Health Department, we were there building, we helped manage the build, but we are not responsible for paying the debt, so they will be taking care of that.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize the issuance of not exceed 1 million County Dog Kennel Facility Bond Anticipation Notes, Series 2020, for the purpose of paying cost of constructing and acquiring improvements for a new dog kennel facility, together with all necessary appetances thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, another clarification, not general fund money. This is paid for dog and kennel license fees, and if anybody's been to the dog kennel before, it is, it's definitely needed, a new building. We're not quite sure for sure where we're putting it, but it will be hopefully a little bit more central. We do a great job of getting these dogs out into new homes, we have a great staff and great rescue groups that help us do that, but the building is definitely needing a new facility, so.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize the issuance of not exceed 1.5 million County Phone System Improvement Bond Anticipation Notes, Series 2020, for the purpose of paying cost of acquiring and installing a new phone system in all county-owned facilities, together with all necessary appetances thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, this phone system is very old. I'm surprised it doesn't have a string and a can attached to it, but also, we don't have to work all the calls through a main operator or something. So it's, yeah, it's very much needed to keep us up with providing services to the residents.
Our voicemail was not even supported anymore, so, I mean, we really didn't have a choice on this.
You have to dial 1-440 to reach me.
Right.
From the building.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize the issuance of not exceed 500,000 sanitary sewer improvements Overland Road Project Bond Anticipation Notes, Series 2020, for the purpose of paying the cost of constructing and acquiring sanitary sewer system improvements for the Overland Road Project, together with all necessary appetances thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Consolidate the nine bond anticipation notes issued to the county of Lorraine into a consolidation bond anticipation note issue, and establish terms of that consolidated issue.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Community Development, Rescind Resolution 19824 adopted December 18th, 2019, awarding contracted Green Home Solutions for Terry and Jennifer Weese to receive emergency grant assistance from CHIP Program Year 18 home repair activity, which included a contingency for any unforeseen change orders. The rescinding is due to this resolution as duplicate, which was approved on December 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under Sanitary, advertise for bids for Eden Home lateral lining Phase 1 Eden Township, notice in the Chronicle on January 24th and 31st, and open at 2:30 and February 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under Developmental Disabilities, approve agreement with developmental disabilities and prosecutor for support of the developmental disabled individuals, and declare necessary transfer funds pursuant to the Ohio Rebs Code 5705.15 and 16. Said fees for year 2020 are $31,023, the same as year 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Engineer, authorize 25% freeze thaw load limit on various township roads in Carlisle Township. The thaw and moisture period incurred with the Ohio Rebs Code 5577.07 is effective February 1st, 2020 through May 1st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve and enter in construction administration inspection services agreement with CTL Engineering, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $81,637 for Middle Ridge-West Ridge Intersection Improvement Project Amherst Township. 80% will be funded by ODOT, 20% by OPWC. Authorize engineer to execute on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approvals to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve and enter agreement with GOSI in the amount of $50,000 for ongoing engineering inspection and materials testing fees necessary for the continuing construction of the Redfern Trail subdivision in 2020 by Wilkins Farms LLC Columbia Township, and will be reimbursed by the developer, subdivider.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve and enter agreement with Trans System in the amount of $14,700 to assist with the review of signal and roadway improvements on Broadway, associated with the development of Spielberg property as part of the Middle Ridge-West Ridge Safety Improvement Project. In addition to a lane addition on West Ridge Road, the project also included new traffic signal, which requires coordination with the existing signals on Middle Ridge Road for the ramps on State Route 2, and will be paid from the engineer project account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Certify the 2019 County Highway System Mileage Certification of 269.608 miles.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
We want to do the presentation?
Yes, please.
Alyssa Foss, Director of Neighborhood Alliance for the Haven Center, as well as Melissa...
Fisher Stefano.
Myers.
Myers Fisher Stefano.
Fisher Myers. Stefano, what you want?
Uh-oh, do we, oh, we don't need Cordes, really?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Melissa Myers Fisher, the Assistant Jail Administrator at Lorraine County Sheriff's Office, and I have with me today Alyssa Foss, and she's the Executive Director for the Neighborhood Alliance. And so, we were asked to come today to give a short presentation about a partnership that we hope to achieve regarding our homeless inmates who are released back into the community, and some of the challenges that we've seen at the jail with this particular population. And so, we wanted to start out today with some stats about homelessness, and I'm not an expert in homelessness, but Alicia is. She runs the, her agency runs the Haven Homeless Shelter, so I'm going to allow her to talk about, a little bit about some stats for you.
Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, thank you. Okay, so I am the CEO of Neighborhood Alliance, and we run the Haven Center Homeless Shelter as well as the PATH program in the county. The Haven Center Homeless Shelter is a 68-bed facility, and we have men, women, and intact families that we serve, so this is a family shelter. And so, as far as the homeless statistics in the county, we do point-in-time counts, where part of that, my team was actually just out last night, doing a point-in-time count, just to see how many people that they can identify as homeless in the county at a certain point in time. They had 181 homeless that were receiving services, 54 were identical, identified with mental illness, and 27 with substance abuse disorders, and that's reported. I anticipate that that number's probably higher, just given that reporting it sometimes doesn't happen right away. We work very closely with a lot of the other homeless shelters and partner agencies in the county to make sure that we're providing appropriate services for people who are experiencing homelessness in the county. I think one of the things that we are discussing amongst ourselves is how do we address the situation of the homeless inmates as they're being released from jail and coming out, and where do they go? So that's kind of what brought this conversation to the forefront for us. On average, the jail has identified there's about 15 inmates monthly who self-report homelessness, and so we're trying to address the issue of where do these folks go upon release from the jail?
So part of my goal is, was to find a very simple solution to what we felt like was a complex problem, and the complexity probably arises from the fact of this specific inmate population. So oftentimes, they're mentally ill or have substance abuse issues, oftentimes, they don't have a strong family support system, and so we felt like we needed a safe place for the inmate to go to. For us, there is something called the Coordinated Entry System, and I'll let Alicia just briefly talk about this.
So in Lorraine County, when someone becomes homeless, they are required to go through the Coordinated Entry System in order to get placed in shelter services. That program is run through Catholic charities, and so what happens is someone's homeless, they call into Coordinated Entry, and Coordinated Entry has a very detailed intake form that they do with the person. They try to determine, are they in fact homeless, or, you know, do they not meet the definition of homelessness? So if they're staying with a family, they're staying with friends, that kind of thing, they're not necessarily homeless at that point. So they do what's called the diversion process, they try to divert them and keep them from going into shelter, and if that's successful, then that's the end of the discussion, and hopefully, they're able to, you know, stay where they are, find another place that they can go. If it's not successful, then they would continue the process and connect them with shelter services, or if they can find, you know, permanent housing or anything like that form, they'll assist with all of that, making those connections. So that's where the referrals come from for us. So they call into Coordinated Entry, and I think where some of the issue that we're seeing comes up is that Coordinated Entry is not open 24 hours a day. So if someone's being released in the evenings, on the weekends, and we see this in our shelter as well, there's, you know, homelessness doesn't stop because it's a holiday, it doesn't stop because it's the weekend. So we have to have a plan, and so the plan with Coordinated Entry for those folks is that they would go directly to the shelter, but what we're finding ends up happening is the shelters are full. And so if the shelters are full, and they're coming directly to the shelter, where do they go? And so there's some different things that we can do, send them out of county, that kind of thing, but for this particular population, that becomes a little bit tricky, they may not have a vehicle, they may not have transportation to get out of county, there's those kinds of things going on. So that was where we kind of started this discussion about what do we do about this situation, and how do we make sure that if people are being released from the jail, that they're not just hanging out in the parking lot, or, you know, they have nowhere to go and they're just left wandering around in the cold. So we're hoping to find a way to get them into shelter a little bit more quickly, even during times when Coordinated Entry isn't available to them, and the shelters might be full.
Do you actually pick them up at the jail, or do they have to find transportation?
No, through the Sheriff's Office, it's a courtesy the Sheriff's committed to transporting them via a deputy to the homeless shelter.
Okay.
So. So for us, what Alicia was referencing is, just by the nature of their homeless status, and for us in the jail, depends on like when they go to court, and when they come back from court, and the ability to get them coordinated, coordination is key. So we do have a case manager at the jail that actively searches out the homeless population, and if available, Coordinated Entry is proposed to that inmate. Oftentimes, they may say, well, I don't want to go to a homeless shelter, but, you know, obviously, that could be the best place for them. And so, when we can identify a homeless person early enough and Coordinated Entry is open, then we can get that process moved. They do screenings and what they call a vulnerability index tool to give that to the Coordinated Entry. So there are things that we're doing within the jail setting that can expedite, but it's still, the challenge is what to do with the person when Coordinated Entry is closed. So if someone gets released at 11 o'clock at night, and they're completely homeless, it's dark and cold out, we don't want them lingering in the parking lot on Murray Ridge Road, where there's also no transportation, so.
So we can't control that release time for that reason?
No, that's based on a lot of different factors, even if someone does get released, they could have a holder, and so you're working with another county. If they're sentenced to the jail, obviously, we have a lot of time to be able to help coordinate their release and set up services, but when someone's not sentenced, and it's at the liberty of the court and the times, and when they get back, or when the time they're arraigned, so I think for, I'm sorry?
Wouldn't that be something we could coordinate with the courts as far as?
We can, and we do.
Or release being set, so that somebody's not being released at 11 o'clock at night?
Right.
In February, or January, whatever it may be, I mean, that just would seem to make common sense.
And we do, and we do, we do try that, and like I said, there's a lot of factors within the jail setting that sometimes doesn't allow that coordination to take place. So this is a, for us, this is a safeguard. We'll do everything we can to, you know, back time the coordination efforts, but we do need a safeguard. We don't want to be left in the lurch where someone's wanting to hang out in the lobby and the lobby closes, so this will allow us to do that. So for us, our solution, I talked to Neighborhood Alliance, and what we'd like to do is reserve a bed at the Haven, 24/7 bed, and that way, the Sheriff does have the assurance that someone's not going to be left at the lobby or left outside, and so Haven has agreed, Neighborhood Alliance has agreed to go into an agreement with us on that. And so for us, the Sheriff will continue to transport as necessary, and so hopefully, we'll be able to work out some procedure that allows us to all understand the constraints of that. And I think another ideal thing for us is, obviously, the Haven is in the middle of Lorraine, and so even if a deputy picks up someone that's in the township, at least they can get them to a centralized point in Lorraine where we know that there's transportation, food, clothing, shelter. And so, Alicia can just go over a little bit more on what happens after the person arrives?
Sure. So with our shelter, we have 64 beds that are registered with the state, so that's So that's what coordinated entry is looking at when they're filling our beds. They look at the 64. We reserve four beds for the county for emergencies, just for, you know, people who walk in or are dropped off by the various law enforcement agencies. So what we would be looking at is taking one of those four emergency beds and saying it's going to be specific for people who are released from jail. So it will be kept available 24 hours a day so that we make sure that when somebody's released, there is a place for them to go. We would require them to go through coordinated entry. We don't want to bypass that system by any means. But this is sort of that failsafe for when they're not available or can't get to the person as quickly as we would like. So they would come into shelter. The sheriff's office has agreed to drop them off. We would take them from there, get their intake information taken care of, make sure they have food, they have clothing, they have what they need as far as toiletries and all of that, and a place to stay for the night. The next day typically would be when coordinated entry would be called unless it's a weekend or a holiday. And then we would wait until they reopen. So the person might stay for three or four days if it's a, you know, three day weekend or something like that with a holiday. They might stay for several days before they then are passed along to coordinated entry. But that is our typical process for someone who would come in during that time anyway. So it's basically just making sure that there's a bed available. Right now what we see is those beds don't stay available. And so the sheriff's office might show up with somebody and there's just nowhere for us to put them. And then there they are with, you know, really nowhere to go from there.
We have just some basic stats from the Haven and you just want to provide those real quick?
So I'm still working off of our 2018 stats because it's too early in 2020 to have my 2019. But in 2018, the Haven Center had over 19,000 nights of shelter that we provided for people in the county. 507 individuals used those services and among those, 132 were children. So you can see where this is a lot of people that are coming through the shelter and spending quite a few nights there. We do have regulations that we follow through the state of how long they're allowed to stay. That varies per participant. It just kind of depends on how quickly we can get them out. Things like evictions, size of family, that kind of thing, impact how we can house them. Our goal is to get them housed as quickly as possible. We do also have access in our facility to UCAN, which is a collaborative of the United Way that we are a part of to help with preventing people from being homelessness. But when they're in the homeless situation, then, you know, they might also get referred to PATH, which is also our program, that we have connected in 2018, 187 people who are literally homeless, living in places that were uninhabitable in the county, and connected them with community resources, mental health services, and pass them along to case management and mental health so that they can get the services that they need to be stabilized. So those are some of the things that we can provide within the shelter.
Any questions on anything?
You mentioned, how many of those people did you say percentage wise or have mental illness? A large portion, 45% or so?
Up to 45%.
Yeah, that's a lot. So, and then children, you know, finding themselves in a homeless shelter is, you know, very sad too, so.
And I will say that I went out and toured the Haven. It's been a long time since I've been out there, but they really run a great facility. If you haven't been out there, I'm sure Alicia can arrange for a tour of that, so. Any other questions?
No, it's, it's a wonderful program. And it's sad to say that there's that many people, you know, coming in and out of the jail 15 a month that find themselves homeless. So I'm glad you're finding alternatives for that.
Are we identifying if any of these individuals are veterans? And what kind of, because there's certainly resources out there for them. So do we flag those coming out the door?
We do. We flag them when they come in the door at the jail. So that's one of the populations that we flag also are the veterans population. So they're immediately connected to a VSO and receive a different, more intensive case management at the jail for the veteran population. Part of that would be also connecting them to homeless shelters for veterans.
Better home or?
How frequently will you end up with more than one individual being released at the same time?
I think it will be an infrequent.
Okay.
Uh, you know, we, we've thought through that process. It's pretty infrequent that we have two leaving at the same time who would both be homeless and need to go to the shelter. The 15 that we average are those who self-report. There are some incidences where we don't find out till almost released that the person may be homeless or they've lost their chance of going back to a house while they're in jail. So, but that 15 is a good number for us that we're averaging on.
Okay. So the one bed should, should facilitate?
And, and we'll track that. The utilization of that we'll, we'll get back to the county on so we, we can keep those reports.
Thank you.
We also have some limited, very, very limited emergency funds for hotel vouchers. So if there is an instance like that, we do have a small, small pocket of money that if we needed to put somebody in a hotel for one night or two nights until coordinated entry is open, we can do that.
Great, thank you. Thanks for your good work ladies.
Really good. Thank you so much.
You're making a difference.
Very serious issue in the county. You know, I was having a conversation with the pastor of a church who's working on a, a food sharing program and wants to reach out to some parts of Lorraine to help families there. It's a couple of churches in Avon Lake. And, you know, we should all be thankful that, you know, we can lay our heads down in a warm house at night and have a hot meal. But there are a lot of families in this county. It's a very, very serious problem, poverty. A lot of families, a lot of seniors, a lot of kids going hungry every day, not getting the proper meals. You know, we have very high poverty rates in our schools and Lorraine and Elyria in particular, I think as high as 80%. So this is, uh, this is an issue that the community needs to be very much aware of. And we got to think beyond our, our own families and, and take that extra step to, to help those get back on their feet. You know, make sure they get a hand up, not a hand out, but a hand up so that they can get back on their feet again.
Good. Pardon me?
Do we need an MOU with that? Melissa, do we need an MOU with you? Anything? I wasn't sure. I didn't get anything, so.
Then we've, the county administrator was going to pursue that.
Okay.
Not necessarily, it could be an MOU between us and the county and Neighbor Alliance, but yeah.
We'll work on that if we need it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Okay, we'll move down to public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board this morning?
Whoever wants to go first, so.
Can you yield to Terry? He went, okay. Come on up, Terry. We need you to state your name for everybody else.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Terry Stone, the Executive Director of Lorraine County Veteran Service Office. I came here today to introduce our newest employee. We have hired a deputy director for the office, somebody that's transitioning into my position when I leave, which hopefully is pretty soon. I'd like to introduce him to the board and to the, the public that's here. This is Mr. Jacob Smith. He came highly qualified to do the job. We did an extensive interview process, the board did. And Mr. Jacob Smith was selected and he started January 1st. So if you'd like to say something, sir?
Good morning, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I've met all of you before in my previous job working for Congresswoman Capter. I'm very excited to be here, working for the veterans of Lorraine County. It's a new challenge. We're looking at a number of different things. I don't want to get ahead of the board of commissioners for the Veteran Service Commission. But we're looking at a number of different things. And I think you've all had conversations with commissioners about changes and everything else. If I can be of any assistance to any of you, please let me know. You can always reach out to me. Do you have any questions?
Well, I know you're a veteran and what branch of the military did you serve?
The best branch. United States Army. Am I wrong?
Excellent.
No, I, I, I served in the army. I was a fielder, tiller man. I deployed to Baghdad, Iraq from 2003 to 2004. I am a service-connected disabled veteran as well. I got my master's degree from Bowling Green State University in public administration. So it really fits well with the job that I'm doing and I'm very excited.
Good. Thank you for your service and welcome aboard.
Thanks. Any other questions?
No, just happy to have you here, Jacob. I know we've, we've known each other.
Quite a few times, so.
But I think you'll probably hear from the organization that we want to be your partner. And we notoriously have been on board with any service that we can lend from the commissioners and look forward to the new things that we'll be able to do together.
I, I do too, Commissioner. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Gerald W. Phillips, 461 Windwood Way, Avon Lake, Ohio. I'd like to talk about a topic that I first talked about in the summer of 2019, which is very dear to me, my family and my household. It's about the environment, recycling and the trash crisis, including the plastic bag issue. We had one meeting with Commissioner Kokowski and Sueda. We never had a follow-up meeting. It kind of died. My family household, I think, is a poster example of what recycling can be. We mulch our grass. We don't do clippings. We don't throw them away. We do food scraps. We have a composter that we do that. Our rubbish is very small. It's a very small one bag. We recycle most of everything we can, even with the China sword, not taking plastics three through eight. I take paper to Holy Spirit Parish. We take care of the solid waste. We take them to the Abbey Road facility. We recycle about 90% of waste in our household. Oberlin recently passed a, a policy to try to get 100% goal, zero waste. I've had some discussions with Oberlin. I'm working with an individual, Keith Davy, who's an entrepreneur in the trash business. He's in Kioga County. He's a candidate for District Two on similar issues, including the plastic bag. I will be in Columbus dealing with the state legislature issues with plastic bags. I have talked with Senator Gail Manning, Rep. Nathan Manning. I'm also working with the group, Ohio Citizens for Future Generations. And this organization, it's all about future generations and saving the planet. I'm a grandfather. I have two grandchildren. I have four children. It's all about them. If I'm not elected as county commissioner, I'm going to be working more with Ohio Citizens for Future Generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session. Oh.
Mr. Innis?
Hey, I'm getting a little ahead of myself.
You are, ain't you?
That's how it used to be.
I know.
Mr. Innis? Sorry, I almost skipped you.
Yeah, three minutes.
I do have. Four matters of pending litigation to discuss with you in executive session. I also believe that from last week, Jim may have had some collective bargaining things. So we should also conclude that as part of our executive session. And just going back to item 13 for a minute, I would like to recognize Kate Lance from the Clerk of Court's Office and the IT people from our various internal departments, who were the people that spent a lot of time on that and made it possible for us to save those expenditures.
Great.
Mr. Lundey?
Am I allowed to have a commissioner's report?
Yeah, sorry. I almost skipped everybody.
Get into executive session there.
That's how we used to. When I was president before, that's how it went. That was our, yeah, that was our. That was it.
Well, I'll, I'll be brief. We met recently, discussed the County Land Bank. County Land Bank's been doing a lot of good work throughout the county. We're making the neighborhoods better and safer, improving the quality of life. And met to have our first organizational meeting for the new year. Also, as a result of the work of the land bank, we have lots of parcels out there that have become available. We'd sent out letters to those who live next to those parcels of property, see if there's an interest in the property owners adjacent to the property buying those parcels. We're working through those responses at this time. And we want to make sure that those parcels are actually, you know, used properly and not just used so that people can park vehicles there or allow the grass and the weeds to grow. But we're getting a lot of good things done with the land bank. I can't say enough good things about how it's helped to improve neighborhoods and make the neighborhoods better for our families. Also had the opportunity to attend the NOAC meeting in Cleveland. That's where we discussed the region's transportation needs and projects. Just a great collaborative group that gets a lot of good things done for the region. The MLK celebration in Elyria, thank goodness it wasn't cold, as cold as it's been in years past. I've had a couple of years where I thought my nose and ears were literally going to fall off during the march. But it worked out really well. They recognized Latonya Conley, who I had the opportunity to serve with when I worked City of Elyria, just a great lady. She's always been the chair for the MLK Day celebration for Elyria, has done a tremendous job. And after 34 years of service, is about to retire. And she definitely will be missed and we can't thank her enough for her, for her leadership. And it's always a, a good time for us to remember the inspiration of Martin Luther King Jr. and what he's taught us and to practice that each and every day. We had our stormwater meeting the other day, always trying to help the residents with their stormwater issues. And we're always here to work with local officials so that they bring those needs to us so we can work with them through our grant program, up to $400,000 a year to make improvements. You know, this is something where ditches were allowed to go into disrepair for a long, long time. And under, you know, the board before I got here, you and Ted and others launched an initiative to, to dig in and really improve the ditches throughout the county so we could eliminate flooding issues for properties and homes and on roadways. And it's really taken off. We're making a lot of headway. At the same time, we're trying to catch up with decades and decades where the ditches weren't attended to. So it takes some patience too along the way, but very proud of the work that, that we're doing. And then yesterday, Visit Lorraine County hosted for its members an informational session. We're doing a lot of good work through Visit Lorraine County. I think those businesses are seeing more people coming through their doors. We're creating a lot of buzz on social media about Lorraine County, people wanting to come over here to explore our shops and our restaurants. And I just want to salute the staff over there at Visit Lorraine County for the great work that they are doing. And that completes my report.
Very good. Some of this will be redundant, but as Commissioner Lundey said last Thursday, this past Thursday, we had our first land bank meeting of the year. And I want to thank Treasurer Dan Tellerick for serving as chairman since the onset. And he's been a great leader. And I want to both thank and encourage Commissioner Sueda for accepting the role as chairman of the board. I believe with her extensive real estate background, she will be a perfect fit for that. We've removed over 550 blighted homes that would have otherwise been a nuisance in our neighborhoods. And I look forward to more good work in the coming year. I then went down to Columbus for my first CCAO executive board meeting. We had a lot of good discussions about the year 2020. It was decided that the president of the board, Carl Davis, and myself will meet with Governor Dewine at the beginning of February to get acquainted and hopefully get a chance to talk about some of the County Commissioners Association goals for this year. And then Friday morning, we had our first regular CCAO board meeting, which went very well. As secretary to the board, I was in charge of the roll call, giving a report of our executive board meeting and taking notes for the meeting, which I didn't realize I was going to be doing all that, but it, it went fine. It was good. I feel like Teresa, our clerk, I'm doing all that kind of work now, so. Yesterday, we had our first stormwater district meeting, as Commissioner Lundey mentioned. And I'm happy to report that while at the CCAO winter conference, I talked about the need to pass legislation that would allow us to be able to use drones when we are required to view ditches, which we do very often. The problem is we usually can only see a very small portion of the ditch project because of brush and trees. And this is something that they have brought up on my behalf. And I was told Friday that it's at its second reading down in Columbus. So I'm happy to hear that. We might be using drones in the future, taking advantage of technology. And during our meeting, we had a couple of towns, Eaton Township residents that are looking for assistance with flooding issues. And our stormwater district is working to address issues that have been neglected for decades, as Commissioner Lundey mentioned. But it is a local issue and we like for the township trustees to bring the projects to us. Then we rank them and then they are brought forward for approval. In the case of these residents though, the director, along with the engineer's office, will be in contact with the trustees to find solutions to these ongoing problems. Then last night, we hosted an event at the Visitors Bureau for the members. And we had a nice showing of people from various businesses throughout Lorraine County. And we had a dynamic speaker that addressed the group about advertising. And she was really good, brought up a lot of really good ideas. So it was a, it was a nice event, a little bit of food and everybody enjoyed themselves. So that's the end of my report.
All right. So last Wednesday, I did attend the Amherst ADO meeting in the evening. And we were given a, provided with a tour, tour of the New Power School in Amherst, which is really an innovative school. I've watched that structure first being torn down and then rebuilt because I live about a quarter of a mile, eighth of a mile from the school. But it was fun to see the completed school building. I was there for the grand opening, but seeing it with just a small group, you really got a better feel for it and having a.
Can I interrupt? My granddaughter goes there and until she went, she didn't really like school so much, but now she loves it. And it's because of the building. It's like being on a campus.
It is. It's incredible. It's, if, if you haven't seen it, I know that they're very proud of it and a walkthrough is worth your, your time. On Thursday evening, I attended the Genesis House. I think it was their ninth annual pajama party at the Emerald Center in Avon Lake. Avon, I think that's.
Avon.
Avon, yes. Actually, still Avon, till the railroad tracks. And it was well attended. It was a cold evening to leave the house in pajamas. But it was well attended. And I think that they were successful in achieving their, their fundraising goals as well as a wonderful salad and soup bar that they had that evening. In regard to the stormwater meeting and the ditches, I think one thing that residents need to keep in mind when we talk about how ditches have evolved over time, what's happened during that time period is now we're seeing the influx of all the new construction. And so you have, you have a different water situation. You've got a water situation that now includes rooftop water, driveways. All of the, all of the runoff that isn't necessarily.
Thank you.
Wasn't necessarily there when we were dealing strictly with farmland. So there is an added stress in, component in that. I do want to commend Commissioner Kokowski on her insightfulness for recommending and, and advancing the position of using drones for those inspections. We, we are incapable of viewing ditches in certain weather conditions. And that will enable more work to be done through, more balance throughout the year. Saturday, I'm looking forward to the Women's Situational Awareness. It's a free class at the college that is being sponsored by our county prosecutor's office. It's for women. And I think it'll be very interesting. I'm taking my daughter and granddaughter. So finally, the, there were many MLK events through Sunday and, and Monday. I had an opportunity to attend several of them. Yes, the weather gave us a reprieve when we were marching. But I do want to make a shout out to, also to Sleep in Heavenly Peace, who was also honored as the community recipient. I speak about the organization frequently because I like to participate in their work. Last year, we delivered. Last year, we delivered over 600 beds, and on December, and I I've reported this before, but December 22nd or 3rd, we delivered 100 beds that morning, and it was, it was incredible.
Aren't you doing a build Saturday?
We're doing a big build Saturday. City of Elyria is actually sponsoring that one, but they're calling out for volunteers, and it'll be done here in Elyria. I'll post what location they chose, because they're not doing it at at headquarters, but big shout out to Roger Dorsey. He's doing a great job with that organization, and because of him, children are sleeping in beds. That said, my favorite Martin Luther King quote, "The time is always right to do what is right." Thank you.
That's good.
Tuesday, we'll have our investment advisory meeting, board correspondents.
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Question? Kokowski?
Aye.
Sueda? Aye. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Now, I will make a motion that we go into executive session as outlined by our assistant county prosecutor, because our administrator's not here.
I'll second.
And for what I mentioned, yeah.
Second. Aye. Sueda? Aye. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.